This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eckles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed. We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene. Father, we thank you for those who are in attendance. Father, we thank you for this great city and we thank you for the opportunity to conduct the business of this great city. Father, we ask you that you will control and impose your spirit on the tenor of this meeting, Father God, that it may be meaningful, beneficial, Father God, and fruitful. And through it all, Father, we ask that you be given the glory and the honor and the praise for us in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in City Council meeting held on April the 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of April the 26th through May the 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Do we need a discussion?
Aye.
I'd like to discuss it.
You would?
Yes, sir.
Well, you've got the floor then.
Okay.
This is our celebrity here, we're letting him do whatever he wants today.
Okay. No, seriously, I've been looking over, you know, I look over the council payable every week and I've had several issues and I'm not sure what the council can do and we probably need to talk with the administration. I'd like for us to get to a point where we don't ratify payments of accounts but approve them. There's been several things that have gone through that, you know, has been questionable. I've talked with the city clerk about it, I hadn't had a chance to talk with the council about it, but I want us to be thinking along those lines as opposed to ratifying, for instance, all of those checks that went out on the OLF. We had to ratify them and there were some questions about some of those checks in my mind, I think with some of the other councilmen. So I don't know what we can do at this point, but think along those lines as to, I don't know, what it's going to take for us to get to approving as opposed to ratifying.
Lee, how does that impact the legal position? I mean, does it? He's not listening.
He's listening.
Between he and I.
How does that impact the legal position if we just changing that language from ratify to approve?
No, 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 not change the language, actually hold the checks until we approve them. Because I go over that list every week religiously along with the clerk's office and there are some questionable items on there, but by the time I get them, we've already ratified them and they've been paid. And some of those things I'd like for us to hold up and double check before we send them out. Okay.
All righty.
Now, we can take the vote.
All right. We have a motion in second to ratify the payment of the accounts for the checks that were mailed last Friday. So those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify the payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. Good timing, Mayor.
I held up that too, so he get it. Timing's a good thing.
Whereas a cancer survivor is defined as anyone living with a history of cancer from the moment of diagnosis through the remainder of life, and there are nearly 14 million cancer survivors in America. Since over 1.6 million new cancer cases will be diagnosed in the United States this year, increased access to quality cancer care, screening, and prevention, especially among minorities and the medically underserved, must be a top priority in our community. Whereas the city of Gadsden has an active productive cancer survivor population, hundreds of communities worldwide will be celebrating life on Sunday, June 2nd. Whereas on behalf of the people of Gadsden, Alabama, I salute all cancer survivors and those who support them. Therefore, I summon Dietting Mayor of the city of Gadsden and the Gadsden City Council who hereby proclaim observance of National Cancer Survivors Day, Sunday, June 2nd, 2013 in Gadsden, Alabama, and urge all citizens to join in this joyous celebration of life.
Hold it down, you're going to not see your face.
I'm not a speaker, but I want to say I love the Lord and I've been on a journey this past year that none of us really want to go on, but I chose to find joy in that journey and so I just want to raise my hands and praise the Lord that I'm healed and I would like for him to use me for his name to be glorified. And thank you so much.
Okay.
Very good. I'd like to say also I give thanks to God, give him all the glory. And I'd like to thank you all for the proclamation and even before I was finished treatment and everything, I already in the name of my Lord and Savior considered myself healed and free of cancer. So thank you again.
Okay, unfinished business, a is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1207 Oak Street in District 2. William Hatter, Thomas Hatter, Robert Hatter being the last known owners. The resolution was tabled for seven days on April the 30th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we abate the nuisance.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, again, we gave this, the resident, I think more than adequate time and I think we discussed it, or I know we discussed it last week, that the building department would go in and inspect for progress and there was none. So again, I make a motion that we abate the nuisance.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
First reading, ordinance amending City Code Section 18-333 regarding plumbing re-inspection fees. The first re-inspection fee will remain $15. The second inspection will increase from 25 to 50 and from 50 to 100 for the third and subsequent re-inspections. The ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Next week.
Ordinance amending International Plumbing Code 2009 Edition by amending City Code Section 18-432. This specifies that PVC and CPVC pipe and fittings are not permitted inside the perimeter or foundation walls of a building or closer than two feet to the outside of a foundation wall. This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week. New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one. I have a resolution authorizing a roadblock by the Black Creek 4H era slingers to be conducted at the intersection of Knock Little Road and Knock Little Drive where Jax is on the mountain. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution and an ordinance I'd like to have unanimous consent to consider this morning pertaining to no parking on Lakewood Drive.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance and the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted for both items.
I'll ask for approval and this is authorizing placement of no parking signs, this is the resolution, no parking signs on Lakewood Drive. And the ordinance is amending City Code 118-129 to Lakewood Drive is a no parking zone.
Second.
Any other discussion? You have a motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second.
We're ready to vote for adoption at this point. Those in favor to adopt the ordinance and the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both items.
Okay, is there any other?
Mr. President, I have a resolution and I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider at this time and this is authorizing agreement with ABC 3340 for hometown focus program in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion, we set.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mayor, you want to talk about this?
This is an agreement, they're going to be interviewing people here, there'll be scenery shots of events, maybe some video and I think James Spann's going to be coming to town a couple of times and it'll be all through the day on 3340 and be some good exposure for us to let people see what's going on here.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, have a unanimous vote to adopt.
He can come, but he better not bring in more rain.
Love that, Mayor.
Any more discussion? I mean, new business. Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Citizens request Sheila Hurley and Sue Guffey, National Alliance of Mental Health, NAMI Support Group. Come forward.
Please, let me hear remarks in five minutes. Would you state your name and address for the city clerk? I'm Sheila Hurley, I'm the Director for CED Mental Health. It's nice to be back before all of you. And I brought with me one of our board members, Ms. Sue Guffey. She heads up our NAMI chapter in Cherokee County and she's really trying very hard to support a new group here in Edgewall County for NAMI. So, and you may notice that there were some flyers put before you this morning, we have an event that's coming up. This is Mental Health Month and in Mental Health Month, we're trying to go to the community and provide educational programs as well as having people come to us for information. So if you'll notice that flyer I put before you, we will have an event this Thursday at Mount Pilgrim Church and we will be doing some educational things and we have an advocate who will be attending that meeting and we'll be focusing on mental health services. Now, before Ms. Sue starts, let me recognize a few other people. We have some other board members, so we're trying to do things a little bit more informative at CED. So we have some other board members here. We have Angela Wilson, one of our board members. We have Commissioner Parker, one of our board members, that's come along this morning and Ms. Wyndham's here, my secretary, and I think Ms. Angela has her sister with her. So everybody's kind of supporting us, which is a nice thing. And we are networking with 310 boards and we're doing things in a more proactive way and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Sue, whose nickname is Tsunami, and let her tell you about NAMI, okay? Thank you.
NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness and I'm President of the Sinner Affiliate. And we have a group here in Gadsden that's really struggling to get started and to become an affiliate. They meet the first Tuesday of each month at the First Methodist Church at 6:00. And the brochure I've given you tells you a lot about what NAMI is. There is a large segment of our population who suffer from or have a loved one or friend who suffers from some form of mental illness. And when I'm talking about mental illness, I'm talking about any kind of brain disorder in, like in children, you have ADHD, bipolar, schizophrenia, major depression, and some people function very well, but many do not and there's a lot of stigma. So here's what I want from you. First of all, I want you to read this brochure, okay? And secondly, I would love for you to spread the word about us. I know you know somebody who could use our help and we could certainly, they could contribute to our cause too. And I would love it if some of you would attend a meeting, that's the first Tuesday of each month at the Methodist Church. And you know, they need some money to start up and I have to tell you, we started in 2008 and we just didn't have any money except a little bit we got from membership and our probate judge at the time asked the county commission to give us $5,000 a year and it has been a God sin, I'm here to tell you. So I hope you will read this.
Thank you. It's okay. It's okay, Mr. Avery, I talk fast and somehow people get Sheila and Hurley and it comes out Shirley.
I'm in, Sheila.
That's okay, that's okay.
I'll get it corrected in a minute.
That's all right.
I was just looking at the flyer that you passed out for Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church on North 9th Street.
Yes.
And the speaker is Pam Butler.
Yes.
I want that to get out because Pam is a Gadsden native.
Yes.
And a number of people who are probably listening to this or will hear this know Pam. And so I'm hoping people will come out Thursday, she has a testimony.
She definitely does.
And Pam is a prime example of what can happen if you put your mind to it.
Absolutely. And that's one of her reasons, she wanted to come back home and spread the word and try to get people engaged and try to get some services started in her community that she grew up in. And the folks there at the church are real open and we're trying to talk, I won't be present Thursday, but we'll have several CE staff members there and they're going to be focusing not only on the presentation from Pam, but also what we do after that meeting. So one of those things is we're going to be talking about doing a health fair in that community and involving the other providers from around the city of Gadsden and the county so we can bring some services to the community. So I hope all of you can attend, they'll have snacks, they'll have, you know, they'll feed you and they'll educate you at the same time and then hopefully from that meeting we will have some more beneficial services that we're able to provide in the community out there.
Absolutely.
Okay? And let me also note, Mr. Stewart that's on your council is also on our board, so thank you.
I'm very, very proud to serve such a hardworking, dedicated group that does a great job. Proud of you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I do know that, like she said, there's several other organizations, 310s, that are working on this project, so we just hope people will come out and support this.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Debrick, I want you to start.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Mr. Eckles, that's a first. First time I've ever gone first. Do want to recognize today as being National Teachers' Day. I think I heard that this morning, today is a national recognition day for our teachers. So, you know, if anybody's ever been a teacher or been in a classroom, you know that they deserve to be recognized for the commitment that they give to our students on a daily basis. So we really appreciate the work that they do for us. There've been some folks that have approached us about updates on the Highway 411 project. We're going to ask the engineering department to provide an update on next week because they'll be getting some, they'll be getting some information via the MPO meeting that's going to take place this Thursday, May the 9th. So stay tuned on that. But as I can, as I can tell, that project is progressing very well in terms of paving, so we're really excited about that. And just a couple of education points, I always like to, you know, just try to keep people informed about what's going on, not just here in the city, but also in Montgomery. And, you know, there are a number of bills that'll get passed over the next two or three days, but one of, a couple of things I want to highlight is there is a, there's a bill as relates to guns that will, if passed, will allow people to take guns to work. It's probably the most draconian piece of legislation I think I've ever seen in my lifetime and I hadn't been here long, but it's very concerning that, you know, I'm all for protecting our Second Amendment rights, but having weapons at work is scary, very scary. The wind energy bill, I think, has died in committee, so there, I don't know that that's being actively considered at this point. And then of course, the two budgets at the state level, the educate, both the education and general fund budget are being considered and something will be passed as it relates to that. Please become involved and educated about what's going on with our budgets because it's going to have a very real impact on our schools. We had Dr. Miller to come and give an update this morning and, you know, if you, if you care anything about the funding levels for our schools, you'll know that you'll want to get very involved in what's going on relative to our school budgets or our education budget. And of course, the Common Core standards, it's another education item that people need to be, it looks like that's going to survive and will continue to maintain a set of Common Core standards in the state of Alabama, which is huge because it puts us on the same playing field and at the same level as a number of other states who are scoring, scoring much better relative to math and science. And again, you hear me say this constantly, but that's the economy of tomorrow. The jobs of tomorrow are math and science oriented and the more we tell our children that, the more we remind them of that, the better off they're going to be. So I think that's all I have, Mr. President.
Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone that June the 15th, which is the third Saturday in June, something special will be happening in Alabama City on Wall Street, just stay tuned for it, there'll be more coming. That's all we got.
Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to, to reiterate one of the, well, not reiterate really, comment on the education system that we have here in the city of Gadsden and the state of Alabama. And basically, my comments are directed, will be concerning Gadsden City High School. We had a good report this morning from, from a Dr. Miller who stated that, you know, we have kids coming out of Gadsden City High School or who are enrolled in Gadsden City High School that are placing in some high positions in several categories in the state and I can't remember all three of them, but I know we, HVAC, we had a young man to get first place in HVAC in the state of Alabama, so that's a compliment to our city. We also had cheerleading, I think we're on a national, national basis, you know, I think they won first place on a, in a national competition, thank you. And of course, we had Health Sciences also, I think placed number one in the state of Alabama too. So, you know, we've got some good things that are coming out of Gadsden City High School and I, this council and this city supports that school 100% and I would like to encourage everybody else to encourage all of our students and our faculty there at Gadsden City High School to continue to do well. And the only other thing I have is that due to the fact that we will be in Montgomery for the Alabama League of Municipalities on the 3rd Monday, we're going to have a District One meeting next Monday at 6:00 and if I'm not mistaken, it's the 13th, at 6:00 at East Gadsden Recreation Center. And we will have probably one or two other guests from the city, but we will also have Tommy Pearson there who is the President of Pacific Trading and Recycling. And Mr. Pearson will be there to answer any questions, to relieve any fears that anybody may have of the recycling plant that's going in at the, over in East Gadsden in the industrial park. So if you have questions, if you're concerned, then please come out for that meeting next Monday at 13th at 6:00. Thank you.
Man?
Yeah. What Debrick was talking about, there are a lot of reasons why a person has a gun to start with and I am a strong advocate of the Second Amendment. Carrying a gun to work, as I read it, Debrick, I think the bill is that the gun has to be unloaded in a lot car with ammunition in a different part of the car. That's not to say things can't happen, but a lot of times people carry their weapons in the car and it's just one of those things and I just happen to be an advocate in another direction, so that's an argument for a later date anyway. Clayton Cemetery, we will have Decoration Day next Sunday, that's Mother's Day, May the 12th, so everybody come on out, especially Mayor, since you have a loved one buried there. Saturday, we're going to be there Saturday when everybody's decorating to talk to folks too about joining our group and the perpetual care at the cemetery. One thing about the cancer folks, I'm one of those survivors and I think I, my first year, I go along with what you said, so I'm going to repeat all of it, but I'm with you 100%. They gave me a hat at St. Vincent's that I was a survivor, but I can truthfully say that after seven years, it was Jenny's Brunswick Stewie pulling me through. I mean, absolutely. It's a frame of mind, isn't it? It's attitude, I guarantee it is and I appreciate y'all a whole lot, I really do. That's all I have.
Robert?
Just want to make announcement, my district meeting will be next Thursday and we've been slacking making those announcements ahead of time, but next Thursday at 5:00 PM at the Carver Community Center, we'll have our district meeting. And I ask the people to please come out to that meeting on next Thursday. I don't have the exact date, whatever that is. That's 17th, I think? 16th, 17th? 16th, okay. The 16th at Carver Community Center at 5:00 PM. That's all I have.
Mayor?
I don't have anything, Father. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to talk a little bit about, we get some calls, another council gets a lot of them, about the grass, you know, it's raining every day. But what I want you to do is if you live next door to a vacant lot, especially one of the city cuts, you call City Hall and you can ask for the building department, the mayor's office, or community development. You give your address, your name, and your telephone number and we'll see if we own that lot. If we do, we'll get back with you if you're interested in purchasing it and it will be a real deal, trust me. Because we want to unload lots, we cut about 500 to 600 lots a year. We own some, the state of Alabama has tax liens against some of those and also we have some liens against the ones that we have torn down houses. That doesn't mean they have a clear title, so we'll be working on that and that's a slow process. But we're going to get the lots cut, we're going about this different than what we've been doing before and it'll be a sort of trial and error how we're going to do it, but we've got them broken down in each district, we know where they all are and who owns them. So we have the address of them and, you know, call and get on the list. So as soon as we can get the titles cleared on some of them, we're going to get rid of them. If we already have it clear, we'll get rid of them immediately. But just be patient with us, you know, the grass is growing everywhere all over the city, it's been raining for three weeks and I know there's a lot of flooding going on too. And there's flooding at my house, it's run down the driveway and everywhere else, but sometimes when it rains this much, it just can't be helped. The other thing is trash pickup, I know that's sort of been lagging behind, but we've had a lot of storms, so we will get it. Most cities will come out and look at your trash pile that you put out front and tell you they'll charge 50 bucks or 75 bucks or 35 bucks or whatever. We do it free, we have routes. We've had a little mechanical problem on a couple of trucks, but we will get the trash, you call the office, you can call my office, give me, give the secretary the address, we'll make sure it gets picked up. And I'm not talking about garbage, that's a different issue, but we do have regular routes on the garbage as well. But, you know, if you have a contractor work at your house and he piles a bunch of carpet and sheet rock and stuff outside when he gets through, you need to make him or tell him he needs to take it to the dump because that's part of his job when he works at your house. And a lot of them try to just put it out there and leave it. And a lot of them try to just put it out there and leave it. So if we see it and we want to know who it was, you let us know and we'll take it from that end because that's what they're supposed to do. Sometime we try to help a little bit, but some of them really take advantage of it. So you just let us know and be patient with us and we'll get everything looking good eventually, okay? Thanks.
Okay, we have a lot of that in my district. Everybody thinks that they send everybody down to pick up in the country club, poor Roberts district doesn't get anything picked up, you know, and so.
No, because they're in Roberts district, the other Roberts.
The other Roberts.
Yeah. That's why they don't pick up at mine.
We still have trees in the yard. I've never, we had one guy that had 14 trees and five of them fell on his house, so you could, it was the worst I've ever seen. It was, it's worse this time than it was when we had the blizzard back in 93. And I thought that was bad, but I stayed up all night one Sunday night trying to get the, turn the water back on up in, above my house. The, somebody got on the radio and said, you better fill your tub full, or when they did in 10 minutes, they drained the tank up there. Anyway, they've done a great job really of what they've had to work with and all this rain and everything has not helped the situation. So I appreciate everybody being patient. I've gotten very few calls and I appreciate that. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So move.
This meeting's adjourned.